Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The June 12th meeting of the Branford RTM is called to order at 8:01 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is as the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
Would you just hand me those numbers? Mr. Toohill, would you call the roll?
I will. Representative Adams.
Here.
Representative Edelman.
President.
Representative Alphon.
Here.
Representative Amore.
Here.
Representative Anderson.
Absent.
Representative Black.
Here.
Representative Bodenberger.
Here.
Representative Brooks.
Here.
Representative Dayhill.
Here.
Representative Everson.
Here.
Representative Greenberg.
Here.
Representative Hartwell.
Here.
Representative Henshaw.
Here.
Representative Hines.
Here.
Representative Ingraham.
Here.
Representative Keith.
Present.
Representative Leach.
Here.
Representative Larson.
Present.
Representative LaFredo. Absent. Representative Mareska.
Here.
Representative McCall.
Here.
Representative McCormick.
Here.
Representative Nuppani.
Absent.
Representative Papalizio.
Here.
Representative Sharkey.
Here.
Representative Shrestha. Absent. Representative Sumro. Absent. Representative Toohill. Present. Representative Verderam.
Here.
Representative Waterman.
Here.
And ex officios, I see, First Selectman Cosgrove was here earlier, Town Clerk Arpen was here earlier.
Not here now.
Not here now?
No, but they're not here now.
Not here now.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Thank you very much, Mr. Toohill.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of the Minutes of the May 14th, 2024 Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes are approved of the May 14th meeting. Okay, so, Item Number Four, Receipt of Communications, Reports of Committees and Citizen Petitions. I have received two pieces of correspondence, I will read. The first is from Greg Gerlman. "Good morning, Madam Moderator. I would like to respectfully request the following be read into the record by the moderator at next week's RTM meeting. Following up on my May 20th, 1924, 2024 email regarding a legal opinion from the town attorney on the May 14th RTM meeting and budget vote, I have yet to hear any feedback on this topic. Therefore, I am left to assume no legal opinion has been rendered as of this writing. In addition to getting an update on where things stand regarding the town attorney's legal opinion, I am also requesting input as to the legitimacy and legality of the meeting, vote, and resulting budget from Representative Henshaw in his role as parliamentarian, copied here on this email. Please recall that the May 14th RTM meeting was the only meeting before the full RTM where discussion, public comment, and voting was to take place on the approximately $135 million proposed town budget. While there were anywhere from five to seven people in the audience, including myself, wishing to speak at said meeting, public comment wasn't requested by the moderator prior to the budget vote. This was the impression of those looking to speak at the time, as well as others in attendance, including several town employees. A review of the meeting tape verifies the fact that no public comment was called for prior to the RTM vote on the budget. In our town charter, under Moderator Rule One, Section 11, it states that moderator shall at all times guarantee the right of speech to any elector of the town or to any person. Clearly, this did not happen, for if it were to have taken place, several people would have spoken about the budget at that important meeting. No one from the public spoke before the budget vote was taken. Given these facts, it raises some important questions. Among them, was the meeting legal? Was the vote legal? And by extension, was, is the budget legal? Or is the resulting budget the fruit of the poison tree to use legal parlance? Sincerely, Greg Gerlman." This will be referred to Rules and Ordinances Committee for review at their next meeting. A second piece of correspondence is from Representative Chris Hines. "Dear Madam Moderator, I am writing in regards to the May 14th, 24 meeting, 2024 meeting, and more specifically about the resolution that was passed and the documentation that was originally presented that night by Representative Hartwell in supporting such resolution. As it turns out, there were some inaccurate dollar amounts used in the presentation/exhibit documents regarding Guilford and Madison, along with both towns receiving additional emphasis in the oral presentation in comparing their fund balances to Branford. This presentation and supporting documents, as well as the rest of the meeting, was on BCTV and available to the public for viewing and information. Subsequent to the meeting, we received a corrected fund balance document the next day from Representative Hartwell with corrections to Madison and Guilford, resulting in an additional $16.8 million and $9.3 million respectively added to the respective towns' originally shown fund balances, which were presented at the RTM meeting the previous night. Since receiving the corrected document, however, I do not see where the public was made aware of this discrepancy/correction, and with much meeting night conversation regarding keeping the public informed, this is concerning. Therefore, I believe by reading this under communications, the information can be heard and seen by any member of the public, and as discussed, it keeps the public informed. Original fund balances presented in support of the resolution on meeting night were Guilford $2,508,232, Madison $1,605,711. The revised fund balances received the following day after the vote on the resolution were: Guilford $11,789,333, Madison $18,399,761. Thank you, Chris Hines, RTM Second District Representative. This has been read into the record, will be included in the minutes of tonight's meeting, and will be appended on the record of the May 14th meeting as necessary. Thank you. Okay, I, at this time, need, I'm looking for a motion to add an Agenda Item as Agenda Item Number Five regarding the Neighborhood Assistance Program, and I will read the Agenda Item, "To Consider and Review the Town of Branford's 2024 Applications for Submission to the State of Connecticut Under the Neighborhood Assistance Act." Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Here, okay.
Who made the motion to approve?
Well, and Henshaw.
And Henshaw, okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, we need, we need a roll call for this? We need a two-thirds vote?
No, two-thirds vote, yeah, it could be oral more.
Oral, okay.
I guess.
We have a motion, all, any discussion on the motion? No? All in favor of adding this to the agenda as Item Number Five? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, Number Five, I will turn that over to Representative Edelman, who has, this committee has heard this. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program provides funding for municipal and tax credit organizations by providing a corporate business tax credit for businesses who contribute to these entities. There is a cap of $150,000 per year for each business, for each request, and an aggregate amount of $150 if there are multiple requests. This year, the following applications are: Connecticut Hospice, an amount of $100,000 for approved dementia experience model of care; again, Connecticut Hospice for $50,000 for exterior window replacement for energy efficiency; Feed Branford Kids is requesting $10,000 for childcare services, weekend food program for weekly delivery to Branford schools; The Shoreline Trolley Museum is requesting $64,850 for installation of sonar panels for the Branford campus; Charlie Barnes and Repair Shop; Tail-to-Paw Animal Support is making a request of the amount of $75,000. This is for assistance to low-income individuals to keep their pets in their homes. This will provide financial assistance for temporary medical, vaccination, food, and case management for these individuals that qualify. The First Congregation Church of Branford is making a request of $35,000. This is for a comprehensive engineering study to evaluate the condition of the building. This building was originally constructed in 19th century. This study would be in preparation for initiating a restoration project. The Branford Land Trust is requesting $100,000 for structural, electric, and plumbing repairs to their historic land trust house. And a program entitled We Are One, Inc. is requesting $24,000. This is a program that serves victims of human trafficking and at-risk youth by providing essential resources through the We Connect program. This matter was heard earlier this evening, and there was a unanimous recommendation by the admin services with one abstention on the last request for referral to the full RTM, and I would put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. Before I open the floor for discussion, I have a public service announcement from Henry. He asks that we please don't touch the buttons on the microphone as we pass it around. So, as you get it, be careful not to hit the button, okay?
Also, I just wanted to report, point of procedure, that I think we said before that there weren't any ex officios in the room, but First Selectman Jamie Cosgrove is now with us. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a committee report in the form of a motion. Can I, I will open the floor to any discussion. Any discussion, questions, but on part of the RTM? Representative Black.
Madam Moderator, are we separating out the First Group and the We Are One as two different motions, three? That's the way it was done?
Representative Black, I'm setting out the First Group, and the, apart from the Last Group due to my conflict that I would say when we bring it to a vote, I'm just making a motion to bring this.
Okay. We'll separate it at the vote, at the time of the vote.
We'll separate it at the vote, exactly.
Thank you.
Right, I was intending to get to that.
Very good.
I have a conflict, professional conflict of interest with one of the applicants, who's the last one mentioned in the articulation of the entities that I just announced, so I will not be voting on that, for that, but I was going to get to that at the proper time, but thank you, Representative Black.
We will separate that so that you have an opportunity to recuse yourself, okay? Yes, Representative Brooks, comment.
So, I think it'd be cleaner then, so we're going to discuss the First Group right now, and the motion is to approve the First Group, and then we'll pass another motion to the Final Group. So, right now, we're just discussing on the First Group, is that correct? And that is the motion?
Yes, Lynn, let's amend that motion, so the motion would be out of committee to recommend all of the applicants except the We Are One, what is that?
That is correct.
Okay, so we have an amended motion, do I have a second?
Second.
But it's an amended motion out of committee, so, okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, any comments on that group of programs from the RTM? Any questions, comments? From the public? Questions or comments? Okay, then...
I would add, Madam Moderator, there are some individuals here from the public, from some of these entities, so I'm not sure if they want to come up and speak, they're here, they were, I have requested some up until then. So, I know Ms. Kohouli is here, if you'd like to...
It's up to you.
I mean, it's up to you, if you want to, you know, if you want to come and give a quick presentation about what it is that you're requesting and why. We had some of that done on committee.
Thank you. Okay, I will then ask again, does anybody in the room have questions for any of this, regarding any of the individual programs? We have some members here. Do you feel that you have some questions? Now's the time. Okay, all right, no questions or comments? Then we will put the First Group of applicants, put that to a vote. All in favor of approving that group minus We Are One, recommending that they be submitted to the state neighborhood tax assistance program? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the First Group will be recommended and for submission to the state. And now we will make a separate motion to approve the...
I'm going to step out.
Yes, the We Are One program's approval, the application for being sent to the state. We'll wait for Representative Edelman to leave the room.
Okay, we have a motion from Representative Henshaw, and we have a second, Representative Ingraham.
All right, okay, all in favor?
Discussion?
All in favor, oh, any discussion on this, sorry, any discussion on this program? Yes, Representative Black.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just, I've listened to Ms. Van, I've looked at the website, I've looked at her interview, I'm just not comfortable at this point approving this, so I'll be opposing that for, I expect it to pass, but that's based on the interview at New Haven Independent, some discrepancies that I see, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Black. Other comments or questions for the program sponsor?
I don't want to speak in private, I...
In a moment, yes. Any other questions from the RTM?
Madam Moderator?
Yes?
Yes, Nancy McCormick, Sixth District. I'd just like to say that the item, Roman numeral eight, which we are referring to, We Are One, is a $24,000 request for at-risk youth and victims of human trafficking, for those who aren't aware of what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other questions or comments from the RTM? From the public? Ms. Fawn, would you like to come up and speak?
Yeah.
And, once you get here, please identify yourself and tell us where you live.
All right, I'm typically pretty loud, so, hi, my name is Ashley Fawn, and I currently live in North Haven, but I am a Branford native. I graduated from Branford High School in 2002, and I am president and co-founder of We Are One, Inc. It's a grassroots anti-human trafficking nonprofit that I founded in 2022 after graduating from Fairfield University. I use my lived experiences as a survivor of trafficking, as a Branford survivor of child trafficking, to inform my mission of identifying and preventing child and adult sex and labor trafficking right here in the state of Connecticut. So, as far as Mr. Black's discrepancies of the New Haven Independent, I'm not really sure. You may be referring to an interview for The Great Give that was sponsored, can you elaborate on that, the discrepancies?
Yeah, through you, Madam Moderator. My recollection was that you said you were not a victim of, well, sexual trafficking, and not a victim of trafficking, and now you're saying that you are, and, you know, I'd like to go re-listen to that interview, I guess, as you know, this is a new organization for us, and the, you know, I'm glad to hear that you're doing more than just raising awareness, but I haven't had a chance to, you know, confirm anything with our local police department, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. It's highly unusual for a survivor of trafficking, or a survivor of sexual assault or anything to be called out at a public meeting, so just to inform you, it would be best, my phone number and email was on the application, so you always could have reached out to me publicly, but I am open to discussing that. He's referring to an interview with The Great Give last year, and I will say, I'm not sure if I said that I wasn't a victim, but I identified myself as a victim of domestic violence, which is the first...
That I do recall.
Yeah.
Not a victim of trafficking is the specific...
Right, so, anyone that works in, within the trafficking field, I spend a lot of time with state police, specifically the Regionalized Human Trafficking Task Force, I spend a lot of time consulting with federal agencies that work directly with victims in this area. It's a very common victim pattern to first identify as a victim of domestic violence, because DCF reports 67% of child trafficking victims are actually trafficked by their parent, so it's very hard to out somebody that is supposed to love and care for you. So, at that interview, I was not ready. However, if you were to go on The Great Give, or the New Haven Independent, Paul Bass, I believe, he put it up on their Facebook, I did another interview this year, was it like May 1st or 2nd, where I did finally, for the first time, speak publicly about my trafficking situation. And then, just recently, last week, I went down to Washington DC where I spoke openly to members of the House and Senate, Rosa DeLoro, Chris Murphy, Senator Hines, I think I'm getting it right?
Representative...
Okay, I'm getting better, I'm not a politician, I am, yeah, Sue, and, missing one, Blumenthal. Spoke to them openly about my situation, because you have to feel safe, because when you are a victim of familial human trafficking, with connections to organized crime, within the state of Connecticut, you have to be very careful how you share this information and the way in which you share it, because they will use your child to retaliate. I have a seven-year-old daughter, so I have to be very careful the way in which I share my information. But I am now getting more comfortable, thanks to the wonderful meetings I had in DC, and the positive reinforcement, and the connections I have to state, federal, local law enforcement. So, I finally feel comfortable sharing my story, but I would never recommend a new victim that came forward do what I do. And I openly say, don't get on social media, don't do that, I am trained by Fairfield University, I have protection in ways other people don't. So, I thank you for attempting to vet my media imprint, and I am working on putting it all in one space, however, it's not, I'm not in a completely safe space to put everything all together for you, so thank you.
Thank you very much, unless there are, oh, yes, Representative Adams.
Thank you, Representative Adams, from the Fifth District, so through you, to the Speaker. First, I would, your life experience, obviously, is really powerful, and provides a platform that unfortunately too many people have and aren't able to take advantage of. I'm interested in what your credentials are from Fairfield University, and your experience in running nonprofits, particularly around, as you just described, what could be extraordinarily life-threatening, extraction, drawing on my own experience working with another anti-slavery organization, so, just, would love to hear your credentials, thank you.
So, thank you for that question. I am a very new member of the nonprofit community, so I did things very slowly and not too publicly on a website, because I wanted to learn properly. So, I graduated from Fairfield U with a Bachelor of Arts in Liberal and Professional Studies, with a focus on old-school journalism ethics, so I'm an old-school journalist that knows how to vet information properly and to share it on social media in an ethical, yet strategic and sensitive manner, opposite of how media is currently operating. I had a focus on liberal and professional studies, with a focus on humanities, so my professors basically tailored a program for me where I could conduct ethnographic research. Ethnographic research is the study of human behavior within its culture, so it's kind of like being an undercover cop. It's like, yeah, so you basically immerse yourself within the culture, you study their behavior patterns, and then you predict the way in which they will react, so that you can help inform the way you make decisions to help change community culture. I won a Beacon Award last year, which was sponsored by Shore Publishing, for my work in, with this nonprofit, but also working with the United Nations Association, so the United Nations Association is a grassroots nonprofit, it's national, no, it's global, but there is a national network, and then there's different chapters. I serve on the Board of the Connecticut Chapter, and what I do is I help build awareness, I use my domestic violence story and my lived experience as a, thank you, Mr. Black, for helping me, empowering me to share that story, and really tell everybody, yes, I am a victim of human trafficking, a Branford victim of human trafficking, and I'm very new to sharing that. The United Nations Association helps empower me to share it in spaces that I wouldn't know about, because I was labor-trafficked as a child, and even though I grew up here, nobody really knows me, at all, because I was sheltered, I was isolated, and I didn't know how to be in the nonprofit space. So, once I joined the Board last year, they became my mentors, so Judy Doyle, she's a big nonprofit force, she just did the Author Book Walk, I met her last year, she is my nonprofit mentor, she talked to me at 10 o'clock last night when I told her I had to do this meeting, she helps inform my nonprofit, I also am part of the Lions Club in North Haven, and I do public speaking with the Cyber Lions Club, it's called the United Hearts and Hands, and they have a focus on humanitarian efforts and the Sustainable Development Goals of the United Nations. So, I'm new to the nonprofit world, but I'm very, I'm an old-school journalist, so I don't do anything without knowing what I'm doing. I don't know if that answers it, kind of went in a circle there, but...
Thank you. Yes, Representative Verderam?
Through you, Madam Moderator, thank you for your application, thank you for bringing light to this very important issue. I just have a question, you know, because you are applying in Branford, what is your outreach like to the Branford community? How are you identifying victims in Branford? How can they find you? Just kind of interested to see what kind of resources you provide to the residents here in town.
That's a great question, thank you. So, since I'm from Branford, I do have friends that own businesses, and they've helped connect me with wonderful restaurant owners, so Rosso Vino, Gennaro's Home Restaurants, Possessions, I know it's not a restaurant, but another small business, Archie Moore's, have all allowed me to have outreach, awareness events, where we not only fundraise, but we also educate the community, engage Branford High School, I have a 20-person volunteer team from Branford High School, and they actually, I'll give it to them, they empowered me to tell my story, because their feedback was amazing. I also collaborate with BH Care, Umbrella Center, I myself use their resources, so the Umbrella Center is wonderful, because most of my victims that do come forward, and they usually come forward at the awareness events, believe it or not, or they come forward through my social media by me sharing that I'm doing outreach in Branford, and then they reach out to me and say, oh, I didn't realize, you know, you're right here, and so they'll reach out afterwards through social media, and I connect them with the resources that already exist, like the food pantry, and the community dining room, and BH Care, Umbrella Center, they need substance misuse treatment, I connect them with the resources that are already within their community. I also really help them report, that's a big part of my nonprofit, is, you can't, I mean, I'm learning about how you get funding, and the best way to get funding is to show that the victims exist, and the way... I connect them with the resources that are already within their community. I also really help them report. That's a big part of my nonprofit is. You can't, I mean, I'm learning about how, how you get funding and the best way to get funding is to show that the victims exist. And the way to show the victims exist is to get them to report to police. So I will say Danielle Soracy at the Branford PD and Branford Counseling Center, she's been a great bridge to have victims feel comfortable walking into a PD because I will tell you, my trafficker used to tell me, stay out of the Branford PD. Your uncle's got a lot of friends. That scared me, most of my life that scared me. Because he did have a lot of friends in lots of different police departments in Connecticut. Now I have a lot of friends in different police departments in Connecticut. So I'm not as scared. But those victims aren't there. So if I bring them to Danielle and show them I trust Danielle and say, actually Danielle helped me, then they're more comfortable walking into a police department. So I could probably list more and I'm sorry if I'm leaving out. Oh, Premier Kia has been amazing. Robert Alvin of Premier Kia, he was one of my first supporters. The very, am I pronouncing his name right?
Alvine.
Alvine, I always do that.
Yeah.
Bob Alvine has been amazing. And Nancy Herzog was actually one of my really great supporters in the beginning and she donated directly to a victim I needed to rehouse. So Branford has been amazing even though nobody, nobody really knows me. And that's why, because I was, I was isolated.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Ms. Fine? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the body or from the public? Then we will have a vote, all in favor of, oh, Representative Brooks.
I don't want a microphone. I'll just say this. There was a time that I stood in front of this body at that very table for this very thing as just some, I was a little younger, a little more green to this whole thing. And I remember having to answer these same questions. And there's nobody here that would argue my integrity. Now, there's nobody here that would say that the things that I asked for then didn't help this community. But at the time, it was a distrust. And the work that I did then and the things that I provided to this community, I would argue saved not one, but multiple lives. This should not even be a question, we should all vote yes.
Thank you. All right, one more time. Any other questions or comments before we hold a vote? Okay, all in favor of approving this application for We Are One? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. This will be referred on. And if somebody would go out and get Representative Edelman. We have to wait because he's number, he's number six and seven, so. Okay, Representative Edelman, you had a rest, but now you got, you're on again.
There we go.
Item number six, new item number six. To consider and if appropriate, approve the following transfer request from the Registrar of Voters for Fiscal 24.
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
Let the record reflect, I'm recusing myself.
Yes, sir. Representative Black is recusing himself.
Thank you.
Okay, from election workers, $7,000. Equipment rental, $3,000. Seasonal and part-time help, $220. Educational incentive, $900. Moving and storage, $1,312. Building rental, $100. Memberships and meetings, $491. And meal supplies, $1,603 for a total of $14,626. Two deputy registrars, $10,000. Overtime, $10. Professional development, $1,000. Other supplies, ballots, $3,216. Travel, $400 for a total of $14,626. This item was heard by Admin Services, so I will turn this over to Representative Edelman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is just a simple inter-office transfer, shuffling around of monies that the Registrar's office has already been portioned with for. We've all heard before, both committee meeting and at this meeting, the challenges the offices face this year with early voting, the primary, various employment issues such as the necessity for part-time help and one of the registrars having been out for an extended period of time. This motion passed unanimously in Admin Services on June 4th of this year and I'll put that forth in the form of motion.
Okay, thank you for the committee report, Representative Edelman. Are there any questions or comments for the committee from the RTM? Anybody else from the public? Okay, so we have, we have a committee report and a motion. All in favor of approving this transfer of $14,626 for the Registrar's? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, and any abstentions? We have one abstention. Peter. He's a recuse. Thank you. Okay, the motion carries. Somebody go get Representative Black.
Now we lost two.
Probably in the men's room.
You can't keep talking.
Okay, we are all back. Okay, new item seven. I'm going to read this, but we are going to have to vote to amend this item to include an authorization language. And I will, I will read the item first and then read the language that needs to be added and ask for a vote on that. To consider and if appropriate, approve the following transfer request from the Finance Director for Fiscal 24. An increase from the ARPA fund balance transfer of $20,000 and to, from that to increase the East Shore Health District by $20,000 for a water study. The language we will need to authorize as an addition is as follows. The RTM authorizes an increase in the cumulative ARPA fund appropriations from $7,690,000, $690,500 to $7,710,500. This appropriation will provide a grant to the East Shore Health District to conduct a water study in the Short Beach section of Branford. I will first ask for a motion to amend item, new item seven, by adding that language to the item.
Point of information, Madam Moderator. You, the number was, had the 500 in it.
Yes.
Was that not a correction that was made?
Yes.
Earlier with the, it's a $20,000.
That's right.
The ARPA fund balance?
Yes, this was corrected.
Okay.
It was originally, it was corrected. It is, it's $20,000.
That is the correct.
That's the correct, yes.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. All right, we have Hatchell. Who was the second on that?
Okay, thank you.
All right, so all in favor of adding this language to clarify item seven? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. So Representative Edelman, will you speak to the matter itself?
I will, thank you, Madam Moderator. So this is, this came to Admin Services, a request for a fund balance transfer for $20,000 to be provided to the East Shore District for water quality study for Short Beach. I think the essence is to determine the source of contamination of the water at Short Beach. It's my understanding that the town is not the only entity that will be funding this project. And I will put this forth in the form of a motion, I guess, as amended.
I think you can, I think you can put the committee report forward as, because the substance hasn't changed. The amount hasn't changed, so you can.
Well, I will put the report that I just articulated happened, it happened services that did pass unanimously, by the way, on June 4th of this year in the form of motion.
Okay, so that's, that's all we needed to.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a committee report as a motion. Any questions or comments for Representative Edelman? Representative Bonenberger first, and then Representative Keith.
Do you want to just reverse it? Oh, I got it now. I got it now.
Don't touch the button, don't touch the button.
Don't touch the button.
It is working. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just wanted to speak in favor of this and point out that although it is Short Beach water being tested, this is an issue that affects all of Branford, particularly any district that's a shoreline district. We are unfortunately at the, at the edge, at the cutting edge of an issue that really affects all of Branford's beaches. I don't want to talk too much about it because it's not a very pleasant topic. But I think identifying this, and it's really not just Branford beaches, it's any shoreline community's beaches. Being able to identify precisely both the source of these problems and come up with feasible solutions will ensure water quality for Branford swimmers and anybody visiting our lovely town. Also, this is very much in the town's interests, not just in Short Beach's interests. And I urge everyone to support this. Thank you.
Representative Keith.
Thank you. And I'd like to echo your thoughts and comments. Representative Black, Representative Bonenberger, and I met with many, many members of the Short Beach community and, and we have been working on this. Before we wanted to re-vote, I did want to thank formally the administration, specifically First Selectman Jim Finch, Joe Mooney. And I'd also like to recognize and thank the members of the Short Beach Civic Association and other concerned citizens, including Ann Davis, Chris Collins, Doug Hanlon, John Smith, Kurt Johnson. And considering District 3 is one of the smallest districts, I'm pretty sure all of District 3 is here tonight. This, this resolution is an example of bipartisan, nonpartisan, and multi-governmental cooperation and coordination between the First Selectman's Office, our RTM, Representative Robin Comey, Connecticut House of Representatives Deputy Speaker Geraldo Reyes, and Michael Pascilla from the East Shore District Health Department. Finally, I'd like to again thank my colleagues, Adrian Bonenberger and Peter Black, for their work on this critical issue. I urge all members of the RTM to support this continued water study focused on better understanding of the pollution of the Farm River as well as future opportunities to mitigate this pollution through science and public education. Thank you, Madam.
Brad? Thank you.
Representative Hartwell, are you speaking?
By the way, First Selectman, there was a comma after First Selectman. I wasn't promoting him and I wasn't trying to get rid of you.
Well, yeah, you were.
Representative, Representative Everson. Representative Everson.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I hope, I think there's a lot of support for this. It's, it's a good program. I think to cut to the chase, anyone who owns a dog in Branford, where you, where that dog waste goes has an impact on our water. So you need to think about if you're putting that waste down a storm drain, it's going to end up in our water by our beaches. So, you know, bagging it properly, taking it home and putting it in your garbage is probably a good idea. And I'm sure that this study is going to bear out that that may be one of the causes of the problems that Short Beach is unfortunately experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Everson. Representative Black.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just to clarify, but one, people aren't necessarily putting the dog waste directly into the storm drains, but what's happening is that people put it into public trash cans that are adjacent to a storm drain. Water goes in, water flows through and effluent flows into the storm drain and straight into the sound. So that's been identified as part of a problem. There's other issues that we're looking at as well. And I do hope this passes and there aren't people in the audience here who are better versed in this than I am, if anybody has any specific questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other folks like to comment or ask questions about this transfer? Anyone from the public? Anybody else? Okay, hearing no requests for further discussion. All in favor of this item, transfer for the East Shore Health District Water Study? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
The item carries.
All right, new item, new agenda item eight. To consider and if appropriate, approve a request from the Inland Wetlands Agent for the following transfer for Fiscal 24. Professional development, from professional development, $700 to advertising, printing, and binding, $700. This would be heard by rules and ordinances, but since they did not meet on this, we, I will ask for a motion to suspend Rule 441 so we can discuss this on the floor. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? Okay, any discussion on the, on this? No? Okay, all in favor of suspending Rule 441? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No. Okay, the, the motion carries. Representative Hatchell, would you lead the discussion, please?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As you said, this, this was not heard in the May meeting of Rules and Ordinances. I did reach out to the Department head, J.B. Frederick, to get some explanation about this, this small transfer. And this was a response. For the purpose of this transfer request is to ensure that sufficient funds are in place to cover legal notices required by the Connecticut General Statutes for the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. And this, this would be decision notices and public hearing notices. The increase in funds is needed largely due to the commission deciding to meet twice a month, starting this past January, to better address their workload. This was not known when the Department budget request was submitted for the fiscal year 2024, at which point the commission was meeting only once a month. Furthermore, the advertising, printing, and binding budget has not been increased in over 15 years despite increases in pricing. For fiscal year 2025, I requested that the budget be increased from $1,100 to $2,000 to address what is anticipated to be an increased, a continued increase in need. There are no additional known training expenses anticipated for the remainder of this fiscal year. As such, the transfer should not impact training opportunities for staff or commissioners. So again, this is a transfer from professional development of $700 to advertising, printing, and binding, $700. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion? We have a second for that motion?
Second.
Representative Verderam?
Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments on this transfer of $700 for inland wetlands? Anybody? Any comments? No questions? Okay, very good. Let's have a vote. All in favor of this transfer? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to new item nine. To consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance to establish a harbor management commission pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 22A-113K. Representative Hatchell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This item was heard in the May 21st meeting of Rules and Ordinances. A subgroup has been established to research the issue and develop draft language. We had a report in that meeting from the working group and the meeting unanimously voted to re-refer the item.
Okay, we have a motion to refer item nine back to rules and ordinances. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the committee? Any questions or comments for the committee? Hearing none, let's have a vote to re-refer item nine back to rules and ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, this item was heard in the May 21st meeting of Rules and Ordinances. Again, a working group, subgroup has been established to look into the item further and do research. A report from that subgroup was given in the committee meeting, and the committee voted unanimously to re-refer the item, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. I'm guessing we don't need a second on that because it is a committee report. So, are there any questions or comments for Representative Henshaw on the matter to be Any comments? Questions? Okay, let's have a vote. All in favor of re-referring item nine, I mean item 10 to rules and ordinances for reconsideration? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The re-referral, the matter is re-refered. Thank you very much. Okay. New item 11. To consider and if appropriate create an ordinance to change the position of town clerk from an elected position to an appointed one. Once again, Representative Henshaw?
Thank you again, Madam Moderator. In the committee meeting on May 21st, Rules and Ordinances established a subgroup to research this item. No work has been done to date on it. The subgroup has been established and will be able to report in the next meeting, next meeting of Rules and Ordinances. The committee did vote to re-refer this item, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments for Representative Henshaw on re-referring this matter to rules and ordinances? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment with my mic.
Sure. Come forward, please, and identify yourself.
Turn off the TV.
Just following procedure.
My name is John Smith, and I've lived in Short Beach for 50 years, been on the RTM for 18 years. Back in 2004, 2005, 2006, I advocated that these positions should not be an elected position, they should be a professional position because they all require credentials and training, and the town suffers in the learning curve each time we have a change. Of course, back then, it was a better deal, there was one Republican, one Democrat, so it was a fairer deal. But I advocate that when you finally get the language and get everything done, that you support this because, because we're, what are we, a $130 million operation now? And, and you really get to look at every penny you can get and how you can get it. So, I would really push that even though, you know, but then again, a new selectman comes in, you might appoint a Democrat, who knows, a professional Democrat that comes in there. But I can see that nothing has changed in the RTM. You still only have two microphones for the RTM people on a $130, $130 million budget that you have. So, maybe you can allocate some money on the surplus and get maybe, what, four more? Four more things to speak? And then Gina will speak by that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Okay, any other comments or questions on the matter of re-referring this, this very important topic to rules and ordinances for consideration?
I'll never do that.
No? Okay. Not yet. Okay. Hearing no others wish to speak, then let's have a vote to re-refer item 11 to rules and ordinances. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The matter is re-refered to rules and ordinances. Okay, that being the final piece of business on the agenda, I will ask for any other business? Any new business?
I'm not.
Yes, Representative Ingham.
It has to do with the letter that was read at the beginning of this session, Mr. Jerome.
Yes.
It was referred to R and L. I know that the letter had stated to be read into the record, to be noticed. What actions could be expected of R and L?
I believe the request was for a ruling from the parliamentarian. I don't, I referred it for a review, but no, not for action.
Okay, it's a parliamentarian. It wouldn't be a committee?
Well, I guess it's a matter for, for the parliamentarian to decide.
Madam Moderator, yes, as parliamentarian, my feeling was that, I do have an opinion about this, this matter, but I felt that it would be best to bring that to the Rules and Ordinances Committee for discussion prior to rendering my own opinion on it. So, I think it's appropriate to have, have a discussion in Rules and Ordinances and then issue, issue a review or comment on the letter.
Thank you. Representative Henshaw, could I ask a question?
Thank you. Representative, Representative, Mr. Jerome, come forward, please. I'm going to request a five-minute limit on public comment.
Good evening. I'd like to, like to speak on a couple of things here, more past, present, and, and future as it relates to the BOE budget, as it relates to the process, as it relates to last month's interesting meeting, if you will. And it's, and it's interesting to see, even at this meeting, it's almost like, you know, a budget has been voted, has been voted on without public comment, and it's like, why even, you know, what are we going to do? What, what actions? It's, it's just, it's just really odd. The budget process, we have new leadership. The budget process was very similar to the past, really and truly. I mean, it presents as a missed opportunity. We have a new superintendent. He's doing things. He's turning around a situation sorely in need of being turned around, and, and the process and the resulting budget are pretty much the same. I mean, public comment, really and truly, I mean, as you look back on it, you know, in the past, whenever I've had conversations with Republicans, I mean, going back over the past few years about the budget, whenever I've had conversations with Republicans, they blame Democrats. Whenever I've had conversations with Democrats, they blamed Republicans as longtime minorities, as they were in the past. But they all blamed the Board of Education in terms of, you know, the lack of oversight that put the district into the situation that it, that it was in and is climbing out of. So, now what we're saying is, well, the Board of Ed asked for it, and the Board of Ed asked for this budget, so therefore it must be fantastic. I, I don't get that. That, that presents as a contradiction when all members in the past have repeatedly talked about the Board of Ed as being a mighty part of the problem, and rightfully so. Now, we're saying, well, the Board of Ed asked for that budget, so, well, the Board of Ed must be right. The process, if, if public comments isn't, isn't desired, and it, and it really does look that way, I would like to respectfully suggest, don't have public comments. Or, if public comments are going to be asked for, they should be asked for at a point before the budget books get printed out, where if there is something actionable, it can be put into action. This process doesn't look, it doesn't look kosher. It, you know, again, that's, that's my opinion, but that's my opinion based on a lot of observation and a lot of fact. The last meeting, you know, it was very interesting when I, when the vote was taken and no public comment was asked for, and that is a fact. I don't understand how there's discrepancy about that fact. I listened to the tape as was suggested by, you know, by one of the RTM members.
One minute left, Mr. Jerome.
And, you know, it's interesting to see that no public comments were asked for, but yet, at that moment, when I interrupted the meeting, all of a sudden, 95% of feedback came from the majority side of the room. And the majority, and all of the people, the feedback from the majority side were emphatic and confident that the moderator had asked for a public comment. How is it that so many smart people can be completely confident about something that in fact did not take place? That's, that's a question to ponder in the confines of a, of a private moment, with all due respect. And, and honestly, I, I hope for the future that, you know, that there can be a process that is befitting the largest part of this town's budget. Because honestly, from the RTM Education Subcommittee to the process, to the RTM, the process just looked, it looked haphazard, it looked sloppy.
Thank you very much. Your time is up, Mr. Jerome.
In conclusion, okay, Democrats have been, with all due respect, and again, I say this as someone who is totally non-political, Democrats have been saying that they want change and desire change. This is not change for the sake of a positive purpose. This is change for the sake of change. You all are doing the same things that they were doing.
Your time is up, Mr. Jerome.
And I hope that you'll change that. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. If there's no other business, any other business to be, to come before the RTM? Okay, then?
Who seconded?
I did.
Second.
Huh?
No, and I said, actually, Madam Moderator, I do have something to say. I would just like to remind people that the Branford Festival is this weekend on the Green, and so please take advantage of that wonderful event that's held in Branford every year. And thanks to all the volunteers and everyone else who makes it all possible and so enjoyable, and I'm looking forward to Strawberry Shortcake.
Strawberry Shortcake. Thank you. Before I entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn, are there, is there any other business to come before the RTM? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Opposed.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.